Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to call the November nineteenth Board of County Commission meeting to order. Everyone will please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious Father, we begin this meeting with grateful hearts for the opportunity to live and serve this great community. We are grateful for our elected leaders who daily navigate opportunities that often come disguised as challenges. We are also grateful for the integrity and code of ethics by which these commissioners govern themselves and for the example they set for all of us. Father, on this day, we ask your blessings on our elected officials as they consider the issues before them. Understanding the challenges that a growing community can present, may their leadership and deliberations always reflect the very best in each of them and bring out the best in all of us. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So this morning, we will start with public comment excluding any public hearing items. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two that sign up for public comment.
Okay.
So I'd like to call Nyla Pipes.
Good morning. Nothing like starting the morning off first, huh? Nyla Pipes, One Florida Foundation. I'm here because you guys have an agenda item, a presentation from South Florida Water Management District. And I encourage you to pay special attention because it's on the C-23, C-24 reservoirs and stormwater treatment areas that go with that. These projects, as a part of Indian River Lagoon South, the IRL South suite of projects, are a part of the comprehensive Everglades Restoration Plan. And they're very important to St. Lucie County and to Martin County, our neighbors to the south, because they will help so much with the water quality and to slow that water down, reaching the north fork of the St. Lucie River. I know you guys have been really supportive of this and you've held on to some of our St. Lucie County taxpayer dollars for quite some time, hoping to find a way to apply those dollars. And I am confident the district is going to work with us, along with the Army Corps of Engineers, to find that way forward. So I just wanted to say thank you more than anything and encourage you to, you know, ask lots of questions because people need to know about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Chris Thompson.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Christopher Thompson. I reside on Nautical Avenue in Port St. Lucie. I reside in defense today of one of the most sacred rights we have as Americans, our right to free speech. I'm speaking to the rule passed at the last board meeting denying candidates for public office for mentioning their candidacy during public comment. Now, I believe that this microphone is sacrosanct, that any effort to curb one's speech at this microphone should, as most speech, only be done to further a compelling government interest. Or, as County Commissioner Townsend remarked at the last meeting, this is the people's and taxpayers' chambers. Now, what were the interests and support of this rule mentioned by this body in the last meeting? First, the chairwoman opined that the commission, quote, "perform board meeting with, quote, business of the county." While that might be an unwritten rule of the board, the topics of this microphone have always been given wide latitude. There was also some suggestion that this rule is about time management. It takes roughly two seconds to say, quote, "I'm running for county commissioner," unquote, even if every challenger listed in the Supervisor of Elections candidate log had identified what office they're running for and did so in every regular meeting in every election year. It would take roughly fifteen years to make up for the thirty-four minutes that this board spent debating this rule. So it's not about time either. There was even discussion about cracking down on politicking, which is defined, quote, "as activity undertaken for political reasons or ends or otherwise promoting oneself or one's policies." If politicking by that definition was restricted, does that mean that the citizens group who petitioned this board to lower their property taxes in September would have been out of line? Or indeed, they were undertaking political activity in promoting their policies? And who would enforce that? The chairwoman, who has allowed no less than three others in meetings I've attended to identify themselves as candidates, and only when I, her political opponent, identified myself, did she raise the gavel and this board subsequently brought this rule? This is probably why the county attorney emphasized that this rule has to be applied indiscriminately. Simply identifying oneself as a political candidate is the kind of transparency that can actually aid the citizen audience in processing the views espoused by a candidate by alerting the public that those views may be biased or skewed. We all know the purpose of this rule, to disadvantage political challengers. It's exactly the kind of solution in search of a problem that makes citizens cynical about their government. Remember, the county attorney mentioned that of the sixty-seven counties in the state, only St. Lucie and maybe Martin have a rule like this, probably because this rule itself is an unconstitutional violation of free speech. In closing, there was a suggestion by a commissioner that the board should have first obtained an advisory opinion from the State Election Advisory Group. If the commission really thinks this is a problem, then repeal this rule and get that opinion from the state first, and then have a discussion on what compelling government interest this speech restriction might further. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I'm going to close public comment. And then we go on to approving the minutes, and there are several. October first, October twenty-second, October eighth, and November fifth of two thousand and nineteen. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So our next item of business is a proclamation, resolution for Alzheimer's Month, November of two thousand and nineteen. A motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. All in favor? All aye. Madam Clerk, you can go ahead and start reading that as I'm on my way down.
Madam Chair, actually, we clerk Smith today.
Welcome, Clerk.
Excuse me.
Good morning.
Are you taking over, sir?
A resolution number one-nine-dash-two-one-five, a resolution proclaiming the month of November two thousand and nineteen as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Alzheimer's disease is a public health crisis. There are more than five-hundred-sixty thousand residents of Florida who have a neurocognitive disorder. Florida has the second highest rate of people suffering with a neurocognitive disorder in the country. More than 1.1 million family caregivers in Florida provide over 1.29 billion hours of unpaid care to the senior family members who have a neurocognitive disorder. Eight thousand seven hundred twenty-one families live in St. Lucie County who must cope with this disease process. It is important that the safety and well-being of Alzheimer's families living in our communities is preserved, as well as their dignity and quality of life, and that services and resources are accessible to all cultures. This board extends its gratitude to those advocates and service providers, including Alzheimer's Community Care and the Alzheimer's Association Southeast Florida Chapter, who provide vital care and support, either the need for dementia-specific care and support Alzheimer's families and a cure for Alzheimer's patients. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This board does hereby proclaim the month of November two thousand and nineteen as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida. This board urges the citizens of St. Lucie County to learn more about Alzheimer's disease and attend educational events that are free and open to the public during Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida, as soon as we adopt it this nineteenth day of November two thousand and nineteen.
Okay. Well, we're gonna take...oh, no, you're not getting out of this picture. Get up here. We have a photographer. Oh, okay.
We're very grateful for all the support that we're receiving, as many are realizing that Alzheimer's disease not only affects the memory, but our hope being as well. So, thank you very much. It means a lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and other members of the County Commission. I'm Bob Gorman. I'm a resident of St. Lucie County and currently Chair of the Board of Directors, Alzheimer's Community Care. We share the honor today with the Alzheimer's Association Southeast Florida Chapter. Although our missions and work may differ, the entire concept is to aid the families who have to cope with this terrible disease. It's estimated that St. Lucie County has eighty-seven-hundred families dealing with this disease process. On behalf of both organizations, and particularly Alzheimer's Community Care, we pledge that our families need not be in isolation as they cope with a disease process that may last as long as twenty years. We pledge that safety and security is a top priority and dignity and quality of life and point to the Silver Alert, Lost on Foot, for both whether an individual is in their automobile or has wandered from their home on foot. We pledge to preserve their well-being. And we pledge to you that the funds that we raise go far, but not far away. In our most recent audit, for every dollar that's donated, ninety-three cents goes directly into program services. Of all of our patients that we care for in the specialized Alzheimer's Care and Service Centers, seventy-five percent of them are tested as severely impaired, which is a zero to seven on a BIM score. And there are many no-empty days, socialization, music therapy, art, singing, music, et cetera. And I would be pleased to announce that Alzheimer's Community Care has reached an understanding, has received approvals in Port St. Lucie to work towards construction with Grace Lutheran Church of our third dementia-specific daycare center here in St. Lucie County. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes?
There's probably three-hundred-thousand people in St. Lucie County watching us today, if not maybe over the week. And if they wanted to get involved and volunteer or donate in some way, how could they do that?
They can contact Mary Barnes down in West Palm. They can call me. My office is four-six-five-five-three-one-one. They can contact any one of the two currently operating dementia-specific daycare centers at St. Peters on Jenkins Road in Fort Pierce. The numbers are available. And also at St. Andrews on Prima Vista in Port St. Lucie. And we welcome any and all volunteers and support. We take a bus of advocates each legislative session to Tallahassee to keep sure, make sure that the legislature is up to date on what we do with funding that we receive for services and the progress that we make, and to seek policies such as Silver Alert and Lost on Foot. Thank you very much, and we greatly appreciate it.
You can go to our...
And go to the website.
Go to our website, alzcare, A-L-Z-C-A-R-E dot O-R-G, org. So that would be the quickest way and really get all the information on, and who actually... We have a family nurse consultant at St. Peters. Our office is right in there, and that's at Fort Pierce. And we also have a program manager and staff at St. Andrews. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next pro...resolution is number nineteen-two-fifty-two, designating the month of November as National Adoption Awareness Month. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you.
Would you like to read the resolution?
I'd be delighted. Thank you very much for the honor. Resolution number one-nine-dash-two-five-two, a resolution proclaiming the month of November two thousand and nineteen as National Adoption Awareness Month in St. Lucie County. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Place of Hope is the largest, most comprehensive children's organization in South Florida, caring for more than three-hundred-and-forty children, youth, and families daily. There are currently five-hundred-and-four children in St. Lucie County who are under DCF supervision, with one-hundred-and-twenty-nine in out-of-home care. Of those one-hundred-and-twenty-nine children in St. Lucie County, Place of Hope has twenty-seven beds to care for these deserving children and youth. Place of Hope works diligently with the Department of Children and Families to ensure that every child has a forever family, evidenced by the forty-two families receiving foster or adoption assistance in the Treasure Coast since January two thousand and fifteen. Children waiting for adoptive parents and families who have adopted these children require and deserve community and agency support. Place of Hope, along with community partners like GL Homes, embraces opportunities that can potentially change the way society cares for children and youth. As a result of GL Homes' premier St. Lucie County corporate partnership, Place of Hope has been able to serve more than three-hundred-and-twenty-nine children, youth, and families since January two thousand and fifteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This board does hereby proclaim the month of November two thousand and nineteen as National Adoption Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida. This board further encourages community agencies, religious organizations, businesses, and others to celebrate adoption, honor families that grow through adoption, further an awareness of the changes and issues in adoption, and focus attention on those children who live in a shadow of a uncertain future while they await forever family, as soon as we adopt it this nineteenth day of November two thousand and nineteen.
Any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
They're welcome. We're gonna get a picture and then you're gonna speak? Let's talk about this great organization.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, thank you so much. And Commissioners, and St. Lucie County, I see so many great faces. Leslie, I see you over there. Good morning. So yes, as Mr. Clerk, and thank you so much for reading that, as he mentioned, we are celebrating over forty-two adoptions just in the Treasure Coast alone since we have been serving this community. And as an organizational whole in our six-county footprint, over two-hundred-and-sixty-five children have found forever families, which is absolutely amazing. In addition, we've had over twenty percent of our foster families actually adopt our children, which really is...our goal is permanency and whatever's best for these children. So to see this rate at what it is is truly, truly amazing. And along with that, that sometimes means that some of our foster families, their homes are closing, making room for their adopted children. And so we're constantly in need of foster families in the community. So we just really appreciate all of your support. I know we've had this proclamation probably three years in a row now, so we truly, truly appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
So I'm just gonna take a second to tell you how much we appreciate you taking care of those children and babies that are out there. It is...you are a conduit between families to families, and we certainly appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay. So now we have a presentation, South Florida Water Management District update.
Hello, honorable Commissioners, Chair, Vice Chair, staff, and everyone in the room. I'm Jackie Thurlo Lipish from Martin County, Town of Soul's Point. And Ms. Jennifer Leeds is with me, and I'll be introducing her in a minute. I'm here just to give a few words before we start and tell you how much I appreciate that Commissioner Hutchinson really invited us here today. And it's been a long journey. It's been a few months getting us here. And Ms. Pipes was there as well in the beginning as we got here. And I am a new member of the South Florida Water Management District. I'm honored to be appointed by Governor DeSantis. And for me, the most important thing is open, transparent communication as we push forward to improve our waters. And I have with many of you worked directly to improve our waters, really since two thousand and eleven and two thousand and thirteen. And many of you have been doing it a lot longer than that. Today, Jennifer Leeds is going to speak to you about Indian River Lagoon C-23, C-24 Reservoir. And I want you to know that we are lucky to have her here today because she has been with the district for twenty years and the whole time in Everglades Restoration. Please give her a warm greeting, and thank you very much.
Good morning.
Happy to be here this morning to give you an update on the Indian River Lagoon South project. This project is a component of the Comprehensive Everglades Restoration Plan. My challenge this morning is to make sure that I don't use any acronyms throughout this. And so I want to start off with this map, and it shows the various different project components that are in the Indian River Lagoon South. The one that most people are most familiar with is the one that's on the bottom that's circled in red. This is the C-44 Reservoir and Stormwater Treatment Area Project, which is currently under construction. And then if we move a little further north onto the map, in the other red kind of square there, that is where we have the C-23, C-24, North and South Reservoir and Stormwater Treatment Area. And then just a little bit further north to that is the C-25 Reservoir and Stormwater Treatment Area. So all these components are what make up the larger Indian River Lagoon South project. So this project was first authorized by Congress as a federal project back in two thousand and seven. I know it's taken a while to kind of get these project components off the ground and get them moving, but the good news is that they are moving. About a little over a week ago, we were out at the C-44 STA, Stormwater Treatment Area, having an event in which Governor DeSantis attended as we first flooded some of the first cells of the Stormwater Treatment Area, start getting some water into those cells that we can, start getting the vegetation to grow in. And then as we complete the remaining cells over the next few months, we'll also put water into those cells, get the vegetation in there, so we can start getting that Stormwater Treatment Area up and running even ahead of the reservoir prior to it being complete. So the Stormwater Treatment Area is being constructed by the Water Management District. It's about six-four-hundred acres, and like I said, we started flooding those cells. Concurrently, the Corps, the Army Corps of Engineers, is constructing the reservoir that's sitting adjacent to it. It's about thirty-four-hundred acres and fifteen feet deep, so it'll hold about fifty-thousand acre-feet worth of water sitting on the C-44 canal. They anticipate that being complete in late two thousand and twenty-one. But again, by us completing the Stormwater Treatment Area a little early, we can start getting benefits out of that, so we can actually bring water in from the C-44. We put in temporary pumps, can get that into the Stormwater Treatment Area, and once it's complete, treat that and release that ahead of the reservoir being complete. And then once the reservoir's completed, then that new pump station will come online and it'll be completely operational. And I want to take just a few moments to talk about the C-23, the C-24 Reservoir and Stormwater Treatment Area components. So, you know, we always like these things to move much faster than they really do, but I'm here to talk to you about the schedule that we have today. It's been updated. And I also want to let you know that both the North Reservoir and the South Reservoir, they're not separate components. They will actually work together. So for us, the key point with that is just to ensure that we have all the lands that we need, depending on the embankment heights, that we have enough of the storage to be able to meet the benefits that we have outlined in the project implementation report. So the North Reservoir, right now, the Corps of Engineers has the lead on both the C-23, C-24 North Reservoir, South Reservoir, and STA. So they're the ones in the lead for designing it and for construction. It will hold approximately thirty-thousand acre-feet. It's currently in design for the North Reservoir, and they anticipate that design being complete in two thousand and twenty-one. And right now, they are looking to schedule to start construction of that in two thousand and twenty-two. And what I mean by that is they will put those dollars into their budget to request from Congress in their federal budget so they can start that construction. The South Reservoir, right now, we're looking at it holding approximately sixty-thousand acre-feet. They're gonna start...the Corps will start the design on that in about two thousand and twenty, so sometime next calendar year. And they're looking to start construction on that right around two thousand and twenty-four. So both of those are moving forward. Now for the Stormwater Treatment Area. This one, they actually pulled a little forward on the schedule. So the Corps is looking to start design on that in two thousand and twenty, in the calendar year, and they are programming that to have construction starting in two thousand and twenty-two. The nice thing with the Stormwater Treatment Area, even if it's constructed and completed ahead of the reservoirs being completed, we can still pull water into that STA, treat it, and release it, and get early benefits. So that's one of the reasons why that's one has been pushed forward. So regardless of where in the timeline the reservoirs are being completed, if the STA, the Stormwater Treatment Area, is completed ahead of time, we can put water in that, we can get early benefits out of that. So we'll push those forward as quickly as we can to try to get those projects both online and going. And the last one I'll talk about really quickly is the C-25. This one's a little bit further out on the schedule. It's a reservoir and also a Stormwater Treatment Area. Currently, the Water Management District has the lead on both of these project components. So we're looking to start design on that in two thousand and twenty-two, with construction potentially starting in two thousand and twenty-four. For the reservoir and then for the STA, the Stormwater Treatment Area component with that, we're looking to start design in about two thousand and twenty-four with construction in two thousand and twenty-six. Obviously, all these dates are subject to change based on funding. Obviously, all these dates are subject to change based on funding, and then as we get our resources, sometimes they can shift, so. That was about all I had. I just wanted to give you a brief update. I know there's been a lot of questions on the timeline of these project components, so I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Madam Chair, I've got a couple. And first off, I want to thank both Jackie and Jennifer for being here. We've had many conversations, and I appreciate them coming and bringing this public. That was one of the things on, as Jackie mentioned, the transparency and putting out on.
She's there.
Oh, okay. The transparency, along with putting it out there to the public so everybody's aware. I know we, as a board, in our budget discussions, have had discussions in regards to how much longer do we sit on monies that we've had put aside? So it was important, I felt, that we all are aware of where everybody is, the Corps and South Florida, and the timing of all of this. So the other part, I would like to say, is that, as we're aware of, the funding comes both from the Corps at the federal level, along with South Florida Water Management. And back in August, there was a supplemental, additional $200 million that was put in for Everglades, and it has passed through the House. It is still sitting in the Senate with the hope of trying to get it through before the end of the year. So I would encourage my fellow Board members to really make phone calls and put out letters and so forth, encouraging that, because in reality, what that does for South Florida is it will actually accelerate the design for the North and South by two years, and it will actually accelerate by six years the STA, if those funds are made available. So I would encourage South Florida also work with us, so we're all talking on the same page and pushing for the very same efforts, you know, during this timeframe. So thank you.
Thanks. Any further comment, questions?
Madam Chair, I'd also like to thank South Florida Water Management District and Ms. Leeds for being here, and also for the effort that we've had collaborative options with Ten Mile Creek.
Yeah.
It literally took an act of Congress and many, many years in which to decertify that from a federal project to a state project, and with South Florida stepping up, it now actually functions. I would bring to your attention that all of these projects cost a lot of money to take nutrients out of the system. We have one way, and it's very inexpensive, to keep things out of our waterways, and that is to not let it in. And I'm talking about biosolids. We have a project that has been languishing in a biosolid, seven-thousand-acre biosolid open-air composting facility, and it is looking to discharge into the C-25. So all the work that we're going to do here, and the millions of dollars that are going to be invested in the reservoirs and the cleansing cells, the STAs, would be for naught because these would be downstream. The area of discharge of biosolid stormwater would be right into the C-25, which is about nine miles from the lagoon. So if we work on the biosolid scenario, keeping it out of the waterways, it'll save us millions and millions and millions of dollars after the fact trying to remove it. I just want to bring that to your attention, and just thank you very much for your efforts and the collaboration that we have and our cooperation. Thank you.
Any other comments? I want to thank you for being here. Jackie, I've seen how hard and furious you have fought the fight, had that opportunity when we worked together on several things. So I want to thank you, and thank you, Jennifer, for all you're doing. We can't do it without everybody involved, so thank you again. So the next item, which is always good, is we have a presentation of a check from the Clerk of Court to the Board of County Commissioners.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I come bearing gifts.
Yay.
All right. Good morning for the record, Joe Smith, your Clerk of the Circuit Court. And as many of you are aware, I've made fiscal accountability and transparency top priorities at the Clerk's Office since I was first elected in 2008. Each year, despite many challenges, we have been able to keep our expenses low and to provide back to the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. All of this revenue was generated by state-regulated fees that we collect from recording documents on your behalf. Some include mortgages, deeds, marriage licenses, wills, liens, and other official records. During the last fiscal year, we are proud to have saved taxpayers, drum roll please, twenty-two, $222,946.62.
Excellent.
I'm incredibly, oh, it's a team effort, so we're really pleased to be able to share this with you. We're really proud to say that in the time that I've served as your clerk, my office has saved our taxpayers more than 4.25 million by returning these excess fees to the county. We've also raised an additional 1.2 million for taxpayers through our award-winning Wells Fargo Credit Card Rebate Rewards Program. In addition, we've generated more than 40 million for taxpayers since 2009 through sound fiscal management of the county's investment portfolio. Asher County's Chief Financial Officer, I'd also like to take this opportunity to share some really good news about our popular annual financial report, Dollars and Cents, and our comprehensive annual financial report. We recently were informed that both reports have received additional national awards, bringing our total awards for these publications to thirty-six. For those who have not had an opportunity to read Dollars and Cents, it has a wealth of information about the county's financial and economic health. It includes important trends about our population, our unemployment, our housing, our taxes, and more. You can download it at stlucieclerk.com/dollars. The next issue will be here this spring, and I'll be back to present the key highlights from this report. As always, Madam Chair, thank you very much for allowing me to share just two of the many ways your Clerk's Office demonstrates sound fiscal responsibility for our taxpayers.
Oops. You want us up here, and then you? That's good.
How am I going to do that for you? Absolutely. I'm like a toothpaste.
Nope, you're good. One more, please. Thank you, guys.
Chris is good.
Sorry, I got nothing else. I got nothing else. That's great.
You already got it here, sir.
You don't even get to keep the check.
I know.
The fact is, it isn't recorded, so we can't do anything.
Oh, okay.
However, the direct deposit is possible.
So our next item of business is our consent agenda. I'd like to first note that our purchasing department has requested to have item F-83 pulled from today's agenda. It will be brought back at a future date. Do we need a vote on that? F-8.
Eight.
Eight F-3, I'm sorry.
It's an item related to the request for qualifications for professional engineering services, stormwater management, and design continuing contracts. Again, purchases is requesting that we pull this item. It will be re-agended at a subsequent meeting.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay. The other thing, I'd like to take a moment, because I only got this this morning, I'm assuming that everybody else did. Item 8J3, we received an email from the President's Council Board of Directors, and it reads for the record, concerning item 8J3, we note what appears to be the intention for both an HI East and West MSTU. More importantly, we ask for a single MSTU with the same geographic area as used for the 213 SAD. Respectfully, the President's Council Board of Directors. Just want to make sure that that goes on the record.
Madam Chair, while we're on that one, I was going to actually ask for it to be pulled. And I know this is a permission to advertise, so could I go ahead and address it now?
Absolutely. Thank you.
The way, I mean, it's kind of mixed because in the background, it mentions options, one of the options on there, and then it breaks it down into the East-West proposed one. So I'm asking, is it going to be advertised as only, is that one option, or is it going to be a, basically, a blackboard full of options that we've discussed in the past?
I don't know if Ms. Getler is here, but she can hopefully confirm this. The way the item is presented is that we would advertise two public hearings. One for a South Hutchinson Island East MSTU, and one, an additional public hearing for a South Hutchinson Island West MSTU. If you wanted to address, since we're in the options mode at this point, we haven't made any decisions, we're trying to keep all our options open. If you wanted to address the President's Council's request, you would perhaps have a third public hearing, and that public hearing would be on just a South Hutchinson Island MSTU. It would include both the East and the West to mirror the SAD as what, so that you would be advertising three public hearings for the December 17th meeting. At that point in time, you would have to make a decision which way you're going to go. I mean, couldn't adopt all three of them, but you could adopt the combined one if you chose, or you could do what staff is currently recommending and do, an East and a West. So, you know, from a staff perspective, I think we want to keep our options open at this point, really want to make sure the Board has a lot of options as we go forward. We've also, as another option, the Board's already approved is a special assessment district or an MSBU, so that's another option we're looking at. There are other options as well. So I don't think staff has any problem with the idea or the concept of having a third hearing. I would just ask Ms. Getler, do we have enough time to make sure that we advertise all three?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Barbara Getler, MSBU Coordinator. Yes, we do have to forward ads to the paper today to get them advertised in time for the December 17th meeting, but we could advertise all three if that's the Board's direction.
Madam Chair, I know in the past when we've discussed it in informal meetings, so this is really the first formal conversation, it was always one of those options. So I'm not following why it has to be three separate, if you can help me out, Ms. Getler, the three separate hearings individually. Why could not we not be given and advertised a slate of options that are open from a do-nothing all the way down, you know, so that we're discussing it all at once? Otherwise, I can see those three hearings back to back, and they're going to be crossing back and forth again when it's really just one subject. I don't know, maybe I'm not.
No, I agree. I understand what you're saying.
Well, I mean, I think the law requires separate public hearings for each MSTU, but what we could do, if the Board directs, is we could have one item under that public hearing for MST, South Hutchinson Island MSTU, and have an A, B, and a C, so that we could talk about it generally beforehand and just talk about the options, and then have the Board direct that we want to do, say A was the overall, the one that the, that's the one you want to, I'm just suggesting.
No, I know.
That's the one you want to do, then we would just say, we want to go ahead and hold the hearing on A, and we will not act on B and C.
Okay, and that's why I wasn't sure if it was a legal issue that they had to be held that.
They have to have separate hearings, yes.
I would like, I just think it's going to be confusing if we don't do that discussion ahead of time and then can move into a public hearing. That's just my thoughts on it.
I would agree.
I agree.
I agree. I guess staff is asking for direction. Do you want to advertise the third public hearing as requested?
Yes.
All right, then we'll, with Ms. Getler's permission, we'll amend her item three to include the additional public hearing.
Do we have your permission?
You do. And you have the time to get that in?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Barbara, thank you very much. Okay, now we go back to the consent agenda, and I would ask if there is a motion or anything else that anybody would like to pull for discussion.
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Is that with the amendment?
Yes, with the amendment.
Is that a second, Chris?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So now we go on to public hearings, 9A. Here is the Office of Management and Budget.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. This item is a resolution amending the fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget. Before the fiscal year 2019 books are closed, budget needs to be amended to cover insufficient accounts. This resolution establishes the fiscal year 2019 budget for unanticipated revenue totaling $115,351 and moves money between accounts. This public hearing was advertised on Thursday, November 14th. Staff recommends approval of the budget resolution amending the fiscal year 2018,
This item requires a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak on the item, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the Board?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so now we go on to 10, which is the regular agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair and Commissioners, 10A1 is, it's just a reimbursement from the Health Department for custodial services, $55,000. We are just needing to recognize that revenue's coming in, so that's all this item is.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kippen, do you want to make your announcements at this point?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Just as a reminder, we are closed Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, November 29th for Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Our next regular Board meeting will be December 3rd, which is a Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. here in these chambers. And then we do have a special 4-H event on Thursday, December 5th, that will be held at the Fenn Center beginning at 6:00 p.m. And that is the annual 4-H kids coming in and sharing the progress through the year on their clubs and their projects, which is always an outstanding information session. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned, and we will go to the Erosion District.
We'll come to order. St. Lucie County Erosion District, first on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of October 22nd. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Moving on to general public comment. Is there anyone from the public? Seeing no one, we'll move on to today's consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
Coming together is the Mosquita Control District. General public comment, anybody wishing? Seeing none, we'll go to the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda. Any questions, concerns, comments?
None.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nothing on the regular agenda, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We'll come together as the Environmental Control Board. First item of business is the minutes from August 20th.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
General... General public comment, anyone wishing to address the erosion control board, I'm sorry, the environmental control board? Seeing the movement, we'll close public comment. There are no items on the consent agenda, no regular. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Okay, we come together as the sustainability district. I'm going to open public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? Seeing no movement, we'll move on to approval for the minutes for October 22nd, August 20th, September 17th of 19.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is nothing on the consent agenda? We have nothing on the regular agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. So we are at the end of our commission meeting agenda. We are going to take a 10-minute break and come back for the reorganization meeting. Good morning, everyone. We are, have reconvene, we are going to open the meeting for reorganization for, on November 19th, and I am going to turn this meeting over to-
General public comment.
Pardon me? Oh, okay.
Yep, general public.
Okay. So, I'm not going to turn it over to the clerk yet. I'm going to open the meeting for public comment. If anybody wishes to approach the board?
Madam Chair, may I have a moment of public comment?
Oh, yes.
Wonderful, thank you very much. I know that I don't get the opportunity to come and sit with you very often, so I just wanted to say it's always nice to be here with you, but one particular item that has changed over the last year is the face of your recording secretary. And so I wanted to go ahead and take a quick minute to let you know that Brittany Jones, who served the county and the board for many years, has headed off to a new opportunity in a different part of the world, so she's left us. But in her place is a wonderful individual, and it's Alice Senate. The Senate has been with our office for almost three years, next month is her anniversary. And as you all know, whenever you're in session, she is in session right there with you. So the time that it takes for her to do what she does, to get the minutes to you, by the way, if they're late, it's always me, it's never her, it's me doing my reviews, but to just let you know, she puts a lot of time in on behalf of the board and on behalf of the community, and I also want to thank her husband for his ability to kind of let her kind of hang out and do what she needs to get done, and not worry about her until when she gets home sometimes pretty late. So just wanted to say, welcome, Alice, and we're excited to have you as our new recording secretary. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, I'm going to close public comment, and I am now going to turn this meeting over to the clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, and, good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners is now in session, and the floor is open for nominations for chairman of the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Clerk, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Townsend as chair.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, there's a second. Are there any additional nominations?
Move to close nominations.
The floor is now closed for nominations. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations, Commissioner Townsend. Madam Chair, what you would do at this point, ma'am?
Do you want me to come over?
Whichever you prefer. If you'd like to move now, you can move now.
No, we're fine, so do you want me to take it over?
Yes, ma'am, if you wouldn't please, wouldn't mind, please, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll call for nominations for the vice chairman.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Chris Zadowski for vice chair.
Any other nominations? Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you take the roll? Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we'll, the appropriate, we have the other special districts too, so we need to recess at this point.
Chair Townsend.
We need to recess at this point for, as the board, because we're going to go into the other districts.
Okay, so you just want me to call for recess?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we'll turn the meeting back over to Clerk Smith? No, or do you want me to take it?
Yes, ma'am. It's a little difficult, no problem at all, Madam Chair. If you would close, and Commissioner Zadowski would begin as environmental control district.
Okay.
Thank you. We will come to order of the environmental control district. First item will be the reorganization of the chair. We'll open nominations for the chair of the environmental control board. Are there any nominations?
I got the new one, I think.
That's Joe's part, but okay, I'll nominate Commissioner Zadowski.
I'm just trying to read it along.
I'm telling you this meeting once a year.
Once a year, and never do-
We're all like, woo!
Sorry, Joe.
No, it's no problem at all, this chair. We should practice this, but really, it's only for like 15 minutes, so once a year, so it's all good. So at this time, you nominated Commissioner Zadowski. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Are there any additional nominations? Hearing no other nominations, do I hear a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Floor is now closed for further nominations. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations, Commissioner Zadowski.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to call for nominations for the vice chairman?
For the environmental control.
For the environmental control?
That would be Commissioner Zadowski, since he's the chair.
So, we will open nominat-, well, Joe, do you?
No, for vice chairman.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you, all right. So we will open nominations for vice chair of the environmental control district. I'll take nominations, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Sean Mitchell, please. I'm sorry, Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
We'll come, we'll come to order as the Saint Lucie County Erosion District. Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call for nominations.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. At this time, the meeting of the Saint Lucie County Erosion Control District is in session. The floor is open for nominations for chair of the Erosion Control District. Is there a nomination?
I nominate Commissioner Hutchinson.
Second.
There's a nomination and a second. Are there any additional nominations? Do I hear a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
So moved, second.
The floor is now closed for further nominations. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I'll call for nominations for the vice chair for the Erosion District. Are there any nominations? This isn't hard.
I'll nominate Commissioner Townsend as vice chair.
Is there a second?
Second. So moved.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, if you'll please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, is there a motion to close the Erosion District?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
And I'll call the meeting to order and turn the meeting back over to the clerk for the mosquito control district.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, the meeting of the Saint Lucie County Mosquito Control District is in session. The floor is now open for nominations for chair of the Mosquito Control District. Is there a nomination?
Did I hear him right?
Yeah, he's asking for a nomination for the chair for mosquito control.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Would you like to make a nomination?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a nomination of Kathy Townsend, Commissioner Townsend for mosquito control chair.
I think you're going to be pretty busy, but I think, I'd like to nominate Sean Mitchell. I just think that there's going to be a lot on your plate.
I'll second that.
That is seconding Commissioner Zadowski's comments, or seconding Sean Mitchell?
Sean Mitchell.
Very good, thank you very much. Are there any additional nominations? Do I hear a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
The floor is now closed for further nominations. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations, Commissioner Mitchell.
So we will now call nominations for the vice chairman.
Commissioner Mitchell? What you would like to do, sir, is to call for nominations for vice-
Okay, I'd like to call for nominations for vice chair of the Mosquito Control District. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Bartz.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Forgetting us, okay.
And now, Mr. Chair, if you would like to close the Erosion Control District, we'll go ahead and reopen it, open up the Sustainability District next.
I'd like to close-
Mosquito Control, sorry, Mosquito Control.
I'd like to close the Mosquito Control meeting.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to call the Sustainability District to order, and do I turn, I turn it back over to the clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm turning it over to you a lot today.
Yes, thank you very much. At this time, the meeting of the Saint Lucie County Sustainability District is now in session. The floor is open for nominations for chair of Sustainability District. Is there a nomination?
I nominate Commissioner Bartz.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a nomination and a second. Are there any additional nominations? Do I hear a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, the floor is now closed for further nominations. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am. So I will, I will now open the nominations for vice chair of the Sustainability District.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Zadowski.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion to close.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And I will turn this over to Chairman Townsend.
Thank you, and is there, we will reconvene the meeting to the Board of County Commissioners. And now we're, we're figuring this out, Mr. Smith.
Oh, no problem at all, Madam Chair. The next step, if you don't mind my guidance, is the annual reorganization appointments.
Right, that's, okay, so now we're going to go to the chair. So for the reorganization appointments, the commission appointments to the board and the committees for 2019, the appointments for the chair for the commissioners to serve on the boards and committees for their terms, Mr. McIntyre, we're going to do these one by one, and then ask if the commissioners have any changes of what's already been submitted. Is that acceptable?
Yes, ma'am, that's certainly an acceptable way to do it. I don't have that list in front of me, but you would, I assume that we will read the appointments into the record, and then if the board has any questions or concerns, we can address them, and then there would be a motion to approve.
Okay, so for the commission appointments to the boards and the committees for 2019 and 2020, is there a motion to approve the appointments for the erosion boards and stuff, is what they're asking?
Yeah, that's not very scripty.
Are they separate boards?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
So do you want to do that first? You want to do our board and committees first? Okay. Yep, okay.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for agenda item B1, for the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, as I have it, it would be Commissioner Bartz for the Public Safety Coordinating Council, it would be Commissioner Townsend, or Chair Townsend. For the Roundtable of Saint Lucie County, it would be Commissioner Bartz. For the Tourist Development Council, it would be Commissioner Townsend, Chair Townsend, sorry, I'll get this right here eventually. And for the Treasure Coast Workforce Consortium, that would be a requirement for the chair to serve, and so that would be Chair Townsend.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve? Okay, do you want?
So the chamber is Commissioner Bartz. Public Safety Coordinating Council is Chair Townsend. Roundtable of Saint Lucie County is Commissioner Bartz. The Tourist Development Council is Chair Townsend. And the Treasure Coast Workforce Consortium is the chair must serve on that, and that would be Chair Townsend.
Everybody have that, or is there any more questions?
I just want to say, I'm disappointed that I'm taken off of that, but I understand. But, thank you.
So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, then the appointments for the commissioners to serve on the boards and the committees for one-year terms.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, for the 19th Judicial Circuit Conflict Committee, that would be Commissioner Hutchinson. For the Blue Way Advisory Committee, that would be Commissioner Zdowski. For the Children's Services Council, that would be Commissioner Bartz. For the Council on Aging, that would be Commissioner Bartz. For the County Coalition for Responsible Management of Lake Okeechobee and Saint Lucie and Kualusahatchee Estuaries, that would be Commissioner Hutchinson with Commissioner Zdowski as an alternate. The Friends of the Library would be Commissioner Bartz. The Indian River Lagoon Council Board of Directors would be Commissioner Zdowski with Commissioner Hutchinson as the alternate. The Indian River Lagoon Scenic Highway Treasure Coast Management Entity would be Commissioner Mitchell with Commissioner Hutchinson as the alternate. The Land Acquisition Selection Committee would be Commissioner Zdowski. The Law Library Board of Trustees would be Commissioner, Chair Townsend. The Transportation Planning Organization would be Commissioner Zdowski, Commissioner Bartz, Commissioner Hutchinson, with the alternate as Commissioner Mitchell. The Regional Transit Organization is Commissioner Hutchinson with the vice as Commissioner Mitchell. Property Homeowners Association would be Chair Townsend. The Saint Lucie County Fire District would be Commissioner Zdowski and Commissioner Bartz. The Treasure Coast Community Action Agency Tripart Board is Natalie Tennyson for Commissioner Bartz. Treasure Coast Education Research Development Authority is Chair Townsend. Transportation Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Board, Chair Townsend. Treasure Coast Council for Local Governments, Commissioner Hutchinson. Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council would be Commissioner Zdowski, Chair Townsend, with alternates Commissioner Bartz and Commissioner Mitchell. And the Value Adjustment Board is Commissioner Mitchell with Commissioner Hutchinson as well, and the alternate is Commissioner Zdowski. And the Workforce Development Board of the Treasure Coast is Commissioner Mitchell.
Okay, Mr. Tipton, on the TPO, you had Commissioner Zdowski, Commissioner Bartz, and Commissioner Hutchinson. I also will continue to serve on that, because they need four.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Is everybody okay with the committees?
Move approval.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item three, the Board of Commissioners at Large Committee Appointments. Mr. Tipton, will you be doing this with Kelly?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item B3 is the Board of County Commissioners at Large Appointments, and they can be done with one motion if the board is agreeable to that.
Is the board, the board's okay with it?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Mr. Tipton?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, item B4 is the ratification of Commissioner Zdowski's committee appointments.
And Madam Chair, if I may, I see that there was a slight issue I didn't have on here for the Investments Committee. Add Sean Williams, S-H-A-W, is S-H-A-U-N, Williams, as my investment committee, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Item number five, Commissioner Mitchell's appointments. Do you have any changes?
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Bartz, any changes to your appointments? Not at this time. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Hutchinson, any changes?
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On Commissioner Townsend's appointments, I have no changes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, the appointment to the Planning and Zoting Commissioner at Large. Mr. Tipton, will you and Kelly be doing this?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. Item B9, there are currently two positions on the Planning and Zoting Committee, and the terms are set to expire at the end of the month. Mr. James Taylor and Bob Lowe, both representatives are seeking reappointment. In addition to their applications, there are 24 additional applicants. All of the attached applications have been sent to the board liaison for review to ensure that they meet their minimum requirements to serve. Staff recommends that the board vote and appoint two at-large members from the attached applications.
Madam Chair, I could ask a question. The two that are up, in fact, all, I think most all of the ones that are at the at-large are all asking for reappointment. Do we have to do a separate nomination? Can we just accept their request to be reappointed, or does it need to be done separate?
If, if, if everybody agrees that that's what you want to do, you just move reappointment at that point. So that's the same thing as balloting.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a, a motion to accept the two individuals that are currently at that position.
Second. So for the record, that would be James Taylor and Bob Lowe.
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell. Commissioner Bartz? Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, item B10 is the appointment to the Tourist Development Council. This is an at-large member vacancy. There's currently one position on the TDC Council, whose term is set to expire at the end of the month. That is Mr. Paul Tiglieri, who is seeking reappointment.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, item B11 is the appointment to the Early Learning Coalition. There's currently one position on the early coalition, whose term is set to expire at the end of the month. Kimberly Roberts is seeking reappointment, and a letter of recommendation from the Early Learning Coalition is attached for your consideration.
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We, I believe we are completed. Kelly, do you have any questions?
Madam Chair, yes, I believe we need to make one more appointment for an alternate to the Value Adjustment Board. I believe if, if I have this correct, I have Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner Hutchinson serving with Commissioner Zdowski as the alternate. And I believe the Value Adjustment Board would like to have one more alternate, alternate.
A motion to make, Madam Chair, a motion to make Commissioner Bartz as another alternate.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? None. Kelly, you good? Thank you. Thank you for picking up on that. Is there any other comments, questions? Mr. Tipton, do you have anything else to say? Or Mr. McIntyre?
No, ma'am.
Madam Chair, if I could take a moment before you ask for a motion, I would like to personally thank Commissioner Bartz for her hard work this year as chair. I know sometimes those of us that have served in that position, it can be very testy, and it, but it is also time-consuming, and I appreciate the extra effort you've made throughout the year. You know, as chair, you're asked to be at a lot of stuff to represent the board, so I appreciate it personally that you've, I haven't heard of any event that you have not been there for. So thank you for that additional time that you've put in as chair, and job well done. Thank you.
I'd like to echo the same, same remarks. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. As I, and I'd also like to thank Clerk Smith for being here today. Great job. Thank you for being here, being a part of this. Any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.